Let's stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I am Commissioner Candace Payne, and I get to be Chair of this circus today. I need to introduce all these folks. To my left is Commissioner Tom Rolf. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning.
And Brandy Spangler, who helps us keep on track and make sure everything gets recorded correctly. Andy Hunthausen, Commissioner, good morning. And Nico Hage is our Deputy County Attorney, along with Keegan Shea. They also help keep us in line. And Roger Balls is the C A O of Lewis and Clark County. Like to remind everybody, there's a sign-in sheet at the front on that little table, and we need people to sign or, you know, just let us know who's here, how to spell your name right. And I think there's a line to put your phone number, your contact information, in case we've got to call you up and say, "What the heck did you say?" Or something, you know. Okay. It appears that there are no consent action items. Is that correct? Okay. Then, first up is a memorandum of understanding between Lewis and Clark County and the Lewis and Clark Conservation District, and it will be presented by Jennifer McBroom. Go for it.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jennifer McBroom, and I'm the Supervisor of the Water Quality Protection District. I have in front of you a memorandum of understanding between Lewis and Clark County and the Lewis and Clark Conservation District. The Conservation District sponsored a Grizzly Gulch Planting Project grant application in the amount of $5,064. The M O U is to ensure that the Water Quality Protection District agrees to implement and operate the planting project in accordance of this agreement, including any Conservation District requirements. A little history about the Grizzly Gulch project. The Grizzly Gulch Planting Project will support the work of a larger reclamation project, the Grizzly Gulch Plaster Mine Reclamation Project, which aims to reclaim the site of the Pretty Girl Plaster Mine located south of Helena. Historical mining activities severely disrupted the national flow of Grizzly Creek along four acres of historic floodplain. Where Grizzly Creek historically flowed, now resides a series of large, open pits. These pits disrupt surface and groundwater flow characteristics. Additionally, the pit slopes are adjacent to Grizzly Gulch Drive, a public access road. The overarching D N R C grant seeks to return Grizzly Creek to a functional stream and floodplain, improve water quality by eliminating erosion, and improve public safety and access. With this supplemental grant, the Water Quality Protection District plans to recruit volunteers and revegetate the newly constructed area, also host a public event highlighting the floodplain and riparian improvements, also to continue to monitor the site for habitat, water quality, and vegetation improvements. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair, excuse me, if I might. This is a follow-up, little extra funding for the work we discussed on Tuesday. Is that right?
It is. Madam-
Going to get a little bit more done.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, yes. This is a supplemental grant that is to aid in the planting effort. Just a little history, because the grant was applied back in 2021, so there's inflationary, you know, cost differences. So this is just to aid in a little bit of the seeding, the core fabric, and then involve the landowner to do a little bit of match for him, because it is on private property, but to use his equipment, to do some planting of willow clumps, and kind of move some dirt around. So involve the landowner as well.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else, Andy? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Lewis and Clark County and Lewis and Clark Conservation District as presented.
Second.
Do we have any other further discussion with the Commission? Anything else? Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the memorandum of understanding between Lewis and Clark County and the Lewis and Clark Conservation District. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes three to nothing. Thank you, Jennifer. And I get to sign this. Next on our agenda, number four, Cooperative Forest Road Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the U S Department of Agriculture, Forest Service, Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest, to be presented by Kevin Horn. Mr. Horn.
Madam Chair Payne, good morning. Commissioner Rolf, good morning. Commissioner Hunthausen, good morning to you as well. Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Kevin Horn. Spelling on that is first name Kevin, K E V I N. Last name is Horn, H O R N E. I'm the Operations Manager for Lewis and Clark County's Public Works Department. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'd like to draw your attention to item number four on today's agenda. It is entitled Cooperative Forest Road Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the U S D A Forest Service, Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest. Before you today is an agreement with the United States Forest Service entitled Cooperative Schedule A Agreement. This is a longtime agreement between the U S Forest Service and Lewis and Clark County Public Works Department, which allows maintenance on the specific roads to be performed either by Lewis and Clark County on U S Forest Service roads, or to be performed by the U S Forest Service on Lewis and Clark County roads. This agreement also serves as a document of which specific projects between Lewis and Clark County and the U S Forest Service are outlined in detail and allows the U S Forest Service to perform funding transfers to Lewis and Clark County for services rendered. Going back to April, we had this same cooperative agreement in front of the board. Just as a reminder, we did modify this agreement in April and added a lot of additional roads that you folks did approve. There's no modifications in this agreement today. Simply, this agreement expires in 2025, and we'd like to ask the Board to renew it. This agreement will be finalized upon the acceptance of this Board of County Commissioners, along with signatures from Jenny Chambers, Public Works Director, Candace Payne, Chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners, and the Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest Supervisor, Emily Platt. Staff recommends approval of this Cooperative Schedule A Agreement with the U S Forest Service and authorizes the Chair to sign all applicable documents.
I have a question. I'm looking at this document titled Cooperative Forest Road Agreement between the County of Lewis and Clark and the U S Forest Service. And in the first paragraph, it says, "Parties to the agreement." This agreement made and entered into this blank day of blank twenty blank. Don't you think somebody should put a date in there? Why is it not dated?
Madam Chair, very good question. Once Jenny Chambers signed, and once this Board signed, then it goes back to the Forest Service folks. So Emily Platt, being that this is her agreement, through the Forest Service, the rest of this data will be filled out. It is a five-year contract. And usually, when we do this, we get signatures upfront, and then the Forest Service finalizes the rest of the documents.
Thank you for that explanation. I feel better now. Are there any other questions from the Commission?
Madam Chair. Good.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Horn, just for the public's interest, you did a great job of explaining it and reading the memo here. But maybe just a little bit about how it works on the ground. So this has been a partnership that we've had for a while. This agreement is April, and then now renewing it for five years, hopefully. But just how it works and why we do it, I think it's of interest maybe of the public. It just makes sense to have these partnerships and rather than mobilizing, you know, different entities of government in the same areas would be unnecessary and less, I guess-
Cost-effective?
Right. How about that, effective? So I'll let you speak to it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hunthausen, very good question. I'll do my best to answer that and explain it. This agreement allows us to work on Forest Service roads. I'll give you a couple examples, say Hogum Creek in Lincoln. That's an actual Forest Service road. There's a residential community in there. The Forest Service in Lincoln doesn't have the specialized equipment we have with snowplows, graders, things of that nature. So it's a benefit for them and a benefit for the general public up there. On the other side, we got a road such as Magpie. We have no residents up there. They are in charge of the maintenance of that road. There's a mile and a half stretch that ties into Forest Service grounds. So when we identify all these roads, you know, Forest Service has seven, eight thousand miles, I believe, you know, and we're upwards of 1,500 miles of county roads. Makes sense to partner with them in specific areas. The other thing that comes with it, why some of these modifications have been made in the past is for timber harvest operations. So that really affects, as we know, like the York Community on the Middleman Project. Probably next week or the week after, I'll be presenting a specific project agreement for that Middleman Logging Project. And that's why a lot of it's identified, just to ensure some of that traffic, log truck traffic and timber harvest isn't affecting the residential folks as much. And there's some maintenance items that go with that. So it's a great partnership, has been for many years, works really well between our entities. And it's a five-year contract. The only time you'll see me back is if there's some kind of modification to this. So hopefully that answers it.
Yeah, it does. Just want a little more explanation. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Tom, do you have anything?
Just, I noticed that you've got some great maps with this. And if folks want to go on the county website, look this meeting up, this item, they can see exactly where we're talking about. It covers everything from up at the viewpoint at Gibson Dam to down here, down here on this end of the county. So it's very well explained. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, can we have a motion, please?
Mrs. Chairman, Chair, I would like to move to approve the Cooperative Forest Road Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the U S D A Forest Service in Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest, as explained by Mr. Horn.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the Cooperative Forest Road Agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the U S D A Forest Service, Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest, as presented by Kevin Horn. All those in favor? Oh, wait a second. We need to have discussion further. Do we need further comment? I have a comment. Last, I think in my first year, we were at the Lincoln Commission meeting, and we did a little side trip up to the Lincoln Cemetery. And it's in the original Lincoln Town Site. I didn't know it was there. Probably the people who know it's there are the ones who've got, you know, family buried there. And as we're traveling along, I was informed that the road is actually, it goes through the Forest Service, and then it becomes county, and then it's Forest Service again. And that certainly opened my eyes to this situation, where why would you send county trucks up and then Forest Service trucks up to do that little, you know, mile and a half piece? And then, so, I appreciate the effort and the cooperation and foresightedness that the folks working for us have put into this. So thank you, Kevin. Okay. We have a second, no, a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? This cooperative agreement is approved on a three to nothing vote, and thank you for your presentation. Oh, the next one is yours too. Okay. I was waiting for you to go sit down. The agenda item, Agenda Item Number Five is Task Order 102 to the Contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering Incorporated, as will be explained by Mr. Kevin Horn. Proceed, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, once again, my name is Kevin Horn. I'm the Operations Manager for Lewis and Clark County. As Madam Chair indicated, number five on today's agenda is entitled Task Order 102, The Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering. Before you today is Task Order 102 with Great West to provide engineering services related to the design and permitting for the Birdtail Bridge over Flat Creek. This bridge has load limit and access restrictions currently in place. The long-term plan is to replace the Birdtail Bridge as funding allows. This task order will include the following tasks: Site visit and topographic survey, elevate temporary crossing options, working with permitting agencies, performing hydraulic calculations, and determining feasibility; legal land survey and right-of-way exhibits; wetland delineation and reporting; type, size, and location analysis to determine alternate and options for a permanent bridge replacement. This task order is funded through the Bridge Professional Services item. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve Task Order 102 with Great West Engineering Incorporated for a task order contract amount not to exceed $54,500. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on-
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would-
It's not Mr. Chairman. You can just call me Chairman. We'll be on a first-name basis here.
Well, I don't like, I don't like referring to women I respect as a madam, so-
I agree. You could just call me Chairman Payne.
All right, Chairman Payne, I would like to just talk a little bit about this. We kind of got a wake-up call the end of October with this. Trying to figure it out. I understand, maybe we've been working with some of the property owners around to try to come up with it. And this is to come up with an alternative, to get a spy until we can get a bridge done, which may be some time. And it would appear that maybe we may be having to work out an agreement with a nearby landowner to do some of these things. Is that right?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Rolf, very good question. This is the initial stage, the first step, if you will. We need to know from our consultants, basically, all this wetland mitigation, type, size, and location. Before we can go on to step two, we have to have this in place first and get their recommendations. So Great West does a great job. They'll have, you know, plans and stuff for us and proposals for us to review very soon. And then, yes, then we'll probably have to maybe go to step two, possibly working with landowners up there.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Is there any public comment on this matter? Seeing none, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve Task Order 102 as presented by Mr. Horn.
Is there any other comment from the Commission? I would make one comment. I know the folks up there who have used this bridge for generations are pretty unhappy about the length of time it's going to take us to fix that bridge. But this is the reality we deal with. December 31st, 2025 is the soonest we can expect this engineering report. Till that time, we can't be, you know, looking the other way while people use a bridge that has been identified as being with extreme load limits. When it is misused pursuant to those load limits, what do they think is going to happen? Come on, get real. Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second to approve Task Order 102 to the Contract Between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering, as presented by Mr. Horn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Did I get enough public comment in? I did? Okay. The motion on Task Order 102 has been approved by the Commission in a three to nothing vote. So-
Thank you.
So if they spell my name wrong on the document, do I object, or do I just smile and keep moving?
We can fix that after.
No, this has already got signatures on it. Kevin? No, yeah. Yes?
Madam Chair, I think the document can be reprinted and re-signed by a different party.
Okay, and Carl Yakowicz can-
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. I can dance, but my name is Candace, A C E. Okay?
Madam Chair, we'll get that corrected for you.
That, I think, would be appropriate. Next item on our agenda is number six, and this is a grant task order, to Lewis and Clark County for Environmental Health and Food Safety Licensing, as presented by our friend Laurel Reek. Proceed.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I am Laurel Reek, the Environmental Health and Disease Prevention Administrator for Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today, I have before you a task order between the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services and Lewis and Clark Public Health. These funds will be a reimbursement for up to $63,000 for the period between January 1st, 2025, and December 31st, 2025. The establishment license fees are collected by D P H H S and placed in a local board inspection fund. This annual agreement establishes a payment schedule that maximizes the disbursement of funds to local health jurisdictions, which also supports our inspections of our licensed facilities. The programs that are part of this task order include retail and wholesale food, public accommodations, public pools and spas, as well as trailer courts and campgrounds. We have continued our option to not take on the body art program as it requires a lot of specific knowledge for just a few facilities. The state office does conduct the work required for that particular program. We will conduct pool and spa inspections, plan reviews for trailer courts and campgrounds in partnership with the environmental health team, and offer assistance to peer-to-peer training across the state when we are able. This was, this agreement was developed over a period of time to eliminate payment disputes. The tables and percentages clearly indicate what work is needed to obtain the full allocation to our county. Our payments are based on the number of license fees that are received. We will be receiving $59,640 from 676 licenses paid for 2024. These are predominantly food establishments with 439 licensed facilities. Our license fees pay for 16% of the program costs. Local fees pay for plan reviews and temporary food licenses and an F D A grant adds additional funding that pays for 7.6% of the costs. Local taxpayer dollars make up the remaining 76% of the budget required to operate this program. These fees pay for one inspection per year for most facility types and two inspections for 40-year-round pools and spas in our county. The National Retail Food Program standards recommend that the number of inspections per year be based on risk, which could be up to four per year. All of our license fees are located in statute, making it very difficult to keep our fees current. The retail food fees have not been updated since 2009. While costs to fund our program continue to climb, I am currently sitting on a committee to advocate for equitable fee increases during the 2025 legislative session. We make our decisions on our activities under this task order based on the risk to public health. Inspections are one portion of the work that we do. Our programs involve plan reviews, technical assistance, education, complaint and communicable disease investigations, as well as the inspections. This has been submitted through DocuSign, and I recommend, the staff recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple of questions if I- I gotta check. Is this, what? After we ask. Oh, is there any questions from the other Commissioners?
Yes.
Go for it.
If I might. If I understood what you said, only about a quarter of the cost of doing these inspections is paid for by the, by the fees that are charged to the group, to the individuals that are being inspected.
17%.
17%. And, and yet, we're expected to do this, and the amount of fee is in state statutes, so the legislature has to change that.
That is correct.
Well, and I think I've heard from all the other Commissioners that we're anxious to have that changed. So we will support the effort to get those raised, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go for it.
Just, I don't need to repeat what Commissioner Rolf said, but absolutely, thanks for the explanation and the disparity in how the program is funded, and it is a high burden on the local taxpayer. And I think, as you mentioned, trying to get to a more equitable fee structure would be great, and that involves the legislature. So just for those that may be watching today, Montana Association of Counties, the Health Committee, and through policy process, have also endorsed the idea of change and updating of the fee schedule. I guess you said 2009 was the last time that's happened. So I, for one, I think the Montana Association of Counties and most of the public health organizations, from my understanding, are going to be advocating for some sort of legislative action to increase those fees and make it more equitable. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Just, I've also, I mean, I'm very aware of this. I was on the Public Health Board last, for last year. One of the things I was kind of appalled at is the fees we charge a big entity like Costco, and I appreciate all that Costco does and their fine group, but they pay the same fee for their inspection. How many, as does Bob's Valley Market out here? And I'm pretty sure that's just got to be way- Bob's is getting about, like, they pay $10 for their inspection. The same $10 probably takes you five, 20, I don't know, a bunch of time longer than Bob's. How is that equitable?
It's not.
Okay.
So we have, there are two fees for food, retail food. One is $85 for anybody that has one to two employees, 115 for anybody that has three or more employees. So if you are a larger coffee shop- So if you are a larger coffee shop and you have four employees, you're going to pay the same, and it might take one to two hours to do that inspection, and you're going to pay the same as a large retail establishment that might take four or five hours.
Yes. Okay. Well, I hope our friends at the legislature will help us get this sort of back into a more realistic cost basis here. Got to get out my cheat sheet here. Oh, public comment. Is there any public comment? Nope, don't see any public comment. Can I have a motion, please?
I move that we grant, we approve the grant task order 2507421123-0 to Lewis and Clark County for Environmental Health and Food Safety Licensing as explained by Ms. Reek.
Second?
It has been moved and seconded that we approve this grant task order. Commissioners, do you have any other comment? Then, I'd like, let's see, we'll ask for a vote approving Grant Task Order 2507421123-0 to Lewis and Clark County for Environmental Health and Food Safety Licensing as presented by Laurel Reek. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposeds? It has been, this commission has voted to approve the grant task order, and we, Ms. Reek and her crew go out and keep us healthy. Moving along, we have market adjustment for positions based on salary survey. Will you proceed to explain this to us, Carrie?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Carrie DeRozier. I'm the Human Resources Director for the county. Before you this morning, for consideration, is the market adjustments for fiscal year 2025. Because Lewis and Clark County adopted a market-based pay plan many years ago, we conduct a salary survey every two years. We use this process to compare the salaries of our positions here at Lewis and Clark County to the average wage of the market, which for this survey consisted of 22 organizations providing wage information for just under 8,800 incumbents. Market survey participants include other cities and counties in Montana similar in size to Lewis and Clark County, also state agencies, Helena Public Schools, and the states of Idaho and Wyoming. Although this would not be a fiscal year to do a market survey normally, we conducted one for a second consecutive year in order to stay competitive. In order to understand the recommendation process, it's helpful to know that our positions are classified within grades within our pay matrix. Grades are 5% apart and have seven steps, with approximately 2.5% between steps. Under our market-based pay system, step seven is designated as the target to equal the average of the market of the data collected. In accordance with our pay and classification rules and best practices recommended by Communication and Management Services, who conducted the survey for us, I used some guidelines in making my recommendations. But first, let me review some of the highlights of the information collected from the survey. So the data was collected in October and November of 2024. There was one of the 46 benchmark positions surveyed with step seven rate below 90% of the average rate. There were seven positions with a step seven at 90 to 95% of the average survey rate, and there were 14 positions that were 95 to 100% of the average. There were 24 positions that were over 100% of the average survey rate. And overall, all the positions surveyed, our step seven rate was 100.13% of the survey So in order to make the recommendations, I used the following guidelines for grade So I looked positions that are under 95% of the current market rate. We use the 95% because there's a difference of 5% between each grade. We also looked at positions with closely comparable duties, complexity, and education and experience requirements to the positions under 95% of the current market. And we looked at positions that are part of a promotion ladder and need to remain in grade placements relative to each other. So based on the survey, we had eight positions that were below 95% of the market rate. Based on the comparison between the county's step seven and the average survey rate, I make the following recommendations for grade changes. Moving weed sprayer one from grade five to grade seven, the billing clerk from grade eight to grade nine, legal secretary one from grade 10 to 11, detention officer position from grade 10 to 11, payroll and benefit specialist from grade 14 to grade 15, criminal justice program analyst from grade 17 to 18, deputy attorney one position from grade 23 to grade 24, and county engineer position from grade 24 to 25. And those were the recommendations based on actual numbers in the survey. I also looked at the internal equity piece, the items two and three noted above, and make the following recommendations. Move weed sprayer two from grade six to eight, weed management planner from grade eight to 10, and those recommendations are based on the weed sprayer one recommendations. Move the sobriety compliance coordinator from grade 10 to 11, based on similarity to the detention officer position. Move the legal secretary two position from grade 12 to 13, based on the legal secretary one recommendation, and move the senior detention officer from grade 12 to 13, detention corporal from 14 to 15, and detention sergeant from 16 to 17, and these last three recommendations were all based on the detention officer recommendation. This makes for a total of 15 positions to be adjusted, and knowing we were going to conduct another survey this fiscal year, $100,000 was earmarked in the FY '25 budget for potential salary increases from these adjustments. Often, though, there is enough vacancy savings to cover these adjustments, and in this case, between the money earmarked for the adjustments and vacancy savings, these will be covered. Communication and Management Services provided the executive summary report included with this agenda item today. The report was also presented to leadership staff at the management team meeting on December 12th. I provided a memo with an explanation of each of these recommendations to Roger Baltz, Chief Administrative Officer. I provided cost estimates to Frank Cornwall, Chief Financial Officer, and both have approved these recommendations after review. I have provided the reports and recommendations to you as well, and staff recommends your approval of the grade changes discussed today. And I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Carrie. I, usually I have questions, but you have done an excellent job of explaining this. One thing I want to make clear is the survey was conducted not by a county employee, is that correct?
Madam Chair, that's correct. We use Communication and Management Services to conduct the survey. They're an HR consulting firm. They conduct these salary surveys for many other, both the state, they're very familiar with state agencies, and they conduct salary surveys for other counties in Montana as well.
Okay. And I looked, you and I sat down and went through this, and I'm sure you did with the other commissioners, and I was very impressed with the detail that went into this analysis to make sure that what we're doing is fair and we can do it within the budget, and I'm just basically impressed. So that was all my comment. Oh, I'm supposed to ask for public comment now? Public comment? Is there any public comment?
Maybe comment from the commission.
They're not public yet. We've got to get... Okay. Is there... Does the commission, do my commissioners have any questions for this? Tom?
Commissioner Rolf. Commissioner Payne, I would like to just talk a little bit about the overall cost of this. In rough dollars, what are we talking in increasing of our budget to do this?
So for this fiscal year, the costs for current incumbents, meaning people that are actually going to be affected by the positions, will be to $89,600, just a little over, just a little under $90,000. If we were to have all the vacancies filled at the detention center, it would cost closer to $150,000. But there's a lot of vacancy savings within the detention center because they've been in double-digit vacancies since the beginning of the fiscal year. So their finance coordinator has said they have more than enough to cover these increases for the year, and we also had the money earmarked for the other departments in the county.
And if I might just continue along that line, I think one of the things we struggle with is retraining new people if we lose folks because we aren't competitive. And, you know, do you have an idea on how long it might take in some of these positions for people to really get up to speed? Some being more technical than others, but I can visualize some that, you know, it takes a couple of years of experience to really get up to speed to where they're performing as well as someone we might lose because we weren't, you know, paying enough money to be competitive.
Right. Commissioner Rolf, I don't have exact numbers in front of me, but you're right. The cost of losing people varies by position, but there is an indirect cost and a direct cost for that. So for example, detention officers, there's a lot of training that goes in to those positions. They have training at, you know, the Law Enforcement Academy. They have a lot of time invested. They have officers that train them one-on-one, so there's a lot of time invested in those, so it's costly to lose people there. And to have those positions vacant is also very costly because you have other staff covering that work, which is generally at an overtime rate and not a straight-town rate. So it is very important to be competitive in positions across the board.
And one more, if I might. To put it in perspective, an $89,000 change to 225, I think you said, change, what's our total payroll expense in a year, approximately?
I have not looked at that number.
Not knowing you would hesitate to say?
I would. I don't want to misspeak, so I don't know. I can get it to you.
But it's, yeah, but it's in the millions and millions of dollars.
Millions, yes.
So to put it in perspective, we're not talking about a huge percentage.
Right.
I'm guessing it's in the $25 million range, but I could be wrong. Yeah. So I think we're being, we're trying to approach this, the idea of keeping good people who are well-trained staying with us, and that's what you're trying to accomplish here, rather than going to, losing them to the state or maybe to the private sector or to another government entity and taking that good experience with them.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Andy?
No questions. I'll have a comment before we vote.
Okay. Then I have to ask for a public comment. Public comment? Nope. All right. And we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve the market adjustments for positions based on the salary survey as presented by Director DeRozier.
Ooh.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
Madam Chair, just, I want to say thank you, first of all, and just to reiterate some of the things that have been said, I think Commissioner Rolf covered some of this, but it's really important for us as an entity to make sure that we're, we have some method of assessing our, if our pay scale is not only competitive but fair. So the competitive part, we do compete for employees with the other governmental entities just in our neighborhood, and of course, the private sector, and then governmental entities across the state of Montana. And so being competitive is important, but also being fair is important as well to our employees and making sure they're being paid a wage that will keep them around, as Commissioner Rolf said. Probably that there is, I know there are cost savings and efficiencies in making sure that we have a well-trained, long-term staff versus a staff that is turned over and over and over. That training and that experience is important for service to the public, which is our main role as a county. And then in addition to that, I think that it's important that we have justification, and these surveys give us justification to the public. We can show them, you know, our salaries are based on something, we have a method and a reason and why we do what we do and why we consider salaries and adjustments like this on their behalf. And of course, they're paying for it, so that's important too, to understand how it's being paid for and why. And then, as Commissioner Rolf pointed out, that this adjustment compared to the overall budget for salaries is relatively small. And it's important, and I think that as we entered into this salary survey and all the salary surveys that we've done in the past, from my remembering, that we tried to plan for that, that we anticipate that there'll be some adjustments. So last budget season, we anticipated putting some money aside, the $100,000, and we also anticipated that there would be savings. One of the reasons we've done the salary survey consistently is because we've had so many open positions, it's like, well, we've, one of the reasons anyway, we've had so many open positions that we should make sure that our salaries are being competitive or that they are competitive so that we are presenting a wage when we list those positions so that we might get the best pool of applicants as well. So for all of those reasons, I am happy to support. Madam Chair, and I just want to thank you, Carrie, for the good work that you do and your staff and all the others that have participated in this, Mr. Baltz and others. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just thought of something else I wanted to ask you, Carrie. Should, I was asked by a county employee, or the statement was, "Thank you for the raise," and I thought, oh, I didn't... Is this available on the county website, the actual salary survey report? Is it available for people to look at? I guess it will be as a record of this hearing, is that correct?
Madam Chair, I haven't put it on the website yet. We haven't done that in the past, but I'm happy to put it up there. It is attached as an agenda item, so is, and people can go look at it if they choose to.
And I'm getting the nod from the attorneys over there saying, you know, in the interest of public education, this would probably be a good idea. We certainly don't want people thinking that just because my brother works for the county, I gave him a raise and I didn't give. I think it helps us keep a, the appearance of impropriety is held at bay with, when we make these public.
Yes, absolutely.
So Nico, do you have a comment?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just want to note that that document that you're holding is already on the website. It's included in the packet for today's meeting, and so on the commission meeting page, they can go click on that link and see that document. So it's already publicly available.
All right. That's what we like, keep the public in the know. All right. Without any further discussion, we have a motion... All right, without any further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve the market adjustment for position based on salary survey as presented by Carrie DeRozier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by same sign, hearing none. This market adjustment is approved and continue to fight the good fight.
Thank you.
Item number eight, board appointments. Mr. Baltz?
Thank you, Commissioners, as you just said. This is item number eight for you to consider today. The candidate that you're going to be discussing meets qualifications for consideration of each board. This is for the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee. Jane Colmeyer was completing a term on the board and wishes reappointment to a term that will expire June 30, 2027. There were no other applicants, and under action, staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant for the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee to a term that will expire June 30, 2027. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner, do we have any questions regarding this appointment? Do we have any public comment regarding this appointment? Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move that we appoint Jane Colmeyer to the Open Lands Citizen Advisory Committee to a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Second, Chair.
Do we have any further comment from the commission?
Just, I just like to always encourage people to apply for board and committee appointments. We've got thirty or more of them available. Sometimes we have trouble to get enough people to fill out all the positions that are available, and it's a great way to have some specific input of what's going on in your county. So, I would like to encourage people to take a look at the list of availabilities, it's on the county website, and consider applying to be on one of our boards and committees.
Thank you, Commissioner Rolf. Commissioner Huntoussen, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
All right, having been moved and seconded and discussed, we'll now vote on this. All in favor of the appointment of the Open Lands Citizens Advisory Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the appointment is approved, and we can move on. Are you ready? Okay, is there any further public comment on any public matter within the jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda above? And if there is, you should step forward or forever hold your peace. Uh-oh, there, I knew we had a member of the public. State your name.
Forgive me about that, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's Colin Corbett. I am the field representative for Congressman Downing. I just came in to introduce myself and say that I'm looking forward to working with you guys in the future. That's all I had.
Okay, did you sign our sign-in sheet and put your contact information?
Yes.
And recognize that people from, in your position in the past, they stop by and talk to us. You don't really need to make an appointment. You can come in and, you can't talk to us en masse, except in here, but you can come into each one of our offices and help us communicate with our new congressman.
Sounds good. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.